Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Cunningham and I'm the Vice President of Access Framingham. And before we get started tonight, I just wanted to answer the question, what is Access Framingham? Well, Access Framingham is your local community media station serving the entire city of Framingham. We provide news, information, and entertainment produced by both Access Framingham and local community producers, such as myself. Access Framingham is available on all three cable providers in the city, as well as streaming online at accessfram.tv. Today, local media is under attack from many angles, and it's part of our mission to fight for it. For more election coverage throughout the season, turn to Access Framingham at accessfram.tv. And now I turn it over to today's moderator, Giuliano Espino.
Hello, everyone. As you just heard, my name is Giuliano Espino. I'm a political science professor at Framingham State University, and I will also be the moderator for this evening's doubleheader event, in which we are holding candidates from the four contested city council races and the two contested school committee races in this November's Framingham election. And speak of the devil, I do have to start with a quick public service announcement. Framingham is having citywide elections on Tuesday, November 4th. Alongside the city council and school committee races will be a mayoral election and a proposed vote to change the city's governing charter. On top of that, also important to mention, the last day to register to vote in Framingham is Saturday, October 25th. If you have not already registered to vote, please do so as you possibly can, as quickly as you possibly can. After all, to quote Massachusetts' very own Speaker of the House, Tip O'Neill, "All politics is local." I am now about to introduce the city council districts, school committee districts, and candidates. For District 2, we have Brandon Ward versus Carol Spack. District 3, Mary Kate Feeney versus Ken Weiss. District 4, Michael Cannon versus Stephen Belcher. And District 8, Leslie White Harvey versus John Stefanini. On a special note, Leslie White Harvey was not able to make tonight, so John Stefanini will be speaking by himself. For School Committee, we have District 2, David Gordon versus Lorena Tovar, and District 6, Brent Lewis versus Eddie Rodriguez. The rules of this game for tonight will be as follows. Each candidate grouping is going to have approximately 20 minutes to speak. Each candidate will start with a 90-second opening statement. I will then ask candidates three questions that we have solicited from Framingham residents through Access Framingham. Candidates will have 90 seconds to respond to my line of questions, and at my discretion, candidates will be given a 30-second rebuttal time. One thing that I do want to note, if one candidate names another candidate, that named candidate will be given 30 seconds to respond. Afterwards, each grouping of candidates will close with 90-second opening statements. The order for tonight has been selected randomly by a random number generator, and, you know, to prevent any bias, we did the random number generation in front of all the candidates. The city council ordering will be as follows. District 3 will go first, followed by District 4, District 2, and then District 8. For School Committee, this random one just happened to be in numerical order. We have Districts 2 and 6. So, on that note, we can now have candidates from District 3, Mary Kate Feeney, and Ken Weiss, report up to the stage. Thank you. All right, and I do want to say one last thing. Candidate response ordering for first or second to these questions is going to be decided randomly on the spot by a coin flip. Keep everybody on their toes. So, let's begin. I will flip right now. Candidates can see, we have tails. So, Mary Kate, you can begin. 90-second opening statement, please.
Well, thank you very much to Access Framingham for hosting this during this very important election season. My name is Mary Kate Feeney. I love Framingham. I love this community. I grew up here. I see endless potential amongst our residents and the ideas for a great city. But what I also see is a city that still thinks it's a town, stuck in the old habits of "that's the way we used to do it, and that's the way we always do it." And I think it is time that Framingham is proactive instead of reactionary to everything. Change is coming to Framingham. The question is, not is it, but how are we going to take that change? How are we going to make it our own? I bring a unique combination of community organizing grassroots, I'm sorry, grassroots organizing, expertise in policy, and community leadership. These are the values I'm going to bring to the council, so that you, your voice is heard in the council. I believe the role of a councillor is to be the biggest advocate for their neighbors. And there are so many issues facing District 3 and Framingham. My role is to be your neighbor, your voice, your advocate, who will fight for you and fight for the Framingham that we want for everyone.
Thank you very much, Mary Kate. All right, Ken?
Awesome. Okay, so yeah, my name is Ken Weiss, and I'm a director in a financial tech company, Aneadum. I've been living in Framingham for 15 years, and really what motivates me to run for city council is my passion for clean energy, for the environment, and for preserving our beautiful District 3, uh, thank you, preserving our beautiful farms and fields in District 3. I got introduced to politics with a divestment from fossil fuels article that I brought in front of town meeting in 2013, and that passed, and it got me really excited about democracy and about the opportunities that we have. Next thing that I did in 2016 is bring the plastic bag ban. Now, I don't know if you guys hate me for this or not, but I'll tell you, my biggest nightmare is getting to the stores and forgetting my bags, and ending up on, on, I forget, what is that Facebook, the nasty Facebook? You guys, I'm filtered Framingham, that's my biggest fear. Anyways, so, I'm really committed to 100% clean energy. This is really what I want to work on. I've been volunteering with Energize Framingham, Keep Framingham Beautiful, and I also worked on the Sustainability Coordinator Campaign. But I really want to make sure that our district stays, you know, stays as flat as possible. I don't want to have large buildings, but I am open to apartment buildings in other, in other districts which-
Thank you, Ken. All right, on to the first of three questions, and I do want to say one thing also. All city council candidates will be asked the same slate of questions, to keep everything fair between the races. So, to start us off, the most feedback we have heard from Framingham residents is overwhelmingly in the field of development, and people have very polarizing opinions on this one, as you can possibly imagine. So, the first question, again, starting off with Mary Kate, "Framingham is growing fast, but many residents worry that new development can bring traffic, strain on schools, and rising rent. How do you draw the line between smart growth and overdevelopment? Furthermore, what specific kinds of projects would you be opposed to in your district?"
It's important that we focus on smart growth and livable communities. What right now is happening in Nobscot, there's no excuse for. It is wrong. It is forcing, developers forcing their ideas and their needs for profit on the residents of a neighborhood. What we need to do about development is work neighborhood by neighborhood. Neighbors' voices need to be heard, instead of just developers. And for me, as representing District 3, it is my goal to make sure that those voices are heard, to repair the trust between the residents of Nobscot and the city government, and then working towards the zoning that is there for Nobscot to make it a walkable village, right? We want to walk, we want to bike, we want to welcome the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail that's coming through Nobscot. For the rest of the city, the same thing applies. We have very unique neighborhoods and villages. We should be looking at zoning and planning for the future based around the characteristics and the needs and the ways that these neighborhoods and villages are set up. And it also requires a plan, and it goes back to my original idea in my opening statement about being proactive. We're letting developers tell us what Framingham should be. It's about time that Framingham tells itself and developers who we are and what we want for the future.
Thank you, Mary Kate. Ken, same question to you.
Yeah, I'd love to echo all the things that Mary Kate said. I agree with, 100% with all of this. I just want to say that, from my standpoint, I really have a really strong firm position on rezoning. I don't want to see any new rezoning in our district. I want to keep it farms and fields, and, but I do definitely want to work with the downtown area closer to 135, try to figure out how we can revitalize through development. You know, as an environmentalist, I'm very well aware that the most environmental form of living is in apartments. We can have apartments that are using solar, we can use heat pumps, and if apartments are affordable as well, we can attract people into Framingham. We have to keep those apartment buildings close to the train station where we have public transportation, and not in areas like Nobscot, which would just increase traffic. Yeah, so, really strong, strong on this position. I'm also, I want to remind everybody that I'm not taking any contributions. This is a grassroots campaign. You won't see any of my signs. Signs are not environmentally friendly, you know, they're made out of plastic, and that plastic will end up living forever. So, I'm really knocking on doors, making sure my voice is heard, and talking to people. And this is what I hear. People do not want these huge apartments in our district.
All right, thank you. And since this is such an important issue, I will give candidates some rebuttal time on this one. Mary Kate, what is your opinion on whether there should be any rezoning in your district?
I do not support Nobscot rezoning.
Okay, okay. So, we have full agreement from candidates on that one?
Yes.
Ken, you want to go, or?
No.
All right. Beautiful, beautiful. Love to hear it. Onto another issue as well, that is really affecting Framingham, and I know, I, to get a little personal, I have had this issue really affect students of mine at Framingham State. And this issue deals with one of the most contentious national issues right now: immigration. Probably guessed that one was coming. And so, Framingham has one of the largest immigrant communities in Massachusetts, but fear has grown significantly in these communities after recent ICE operations. And so, what concrete steps would you take to protect and support immigrant families in Framingham? Mary Kate?
What is happening now that we see on the news and on social media is disgusting. Everybody who lives in Framingham should feel safe. They should be able to go to school, safe. Go to work, safe. Go to church and feel safe. Even go into our memorial building, they should feel safe. So, for me, as a councillor, I'm looking at ways of making sure that people know that the city does support them. And that's to remind people, we do have a welcoming ordinance. It is to also ensure that the police, who according to Massachusetts law, do not work with ICE. It is also to look at ways to make sure that the city is protecting all of our residents by what data we're collecting, and to make sure that that data is not shared. It is also, as a councillor, I will make sure that we are prepared if ICE does come into our building for any reason. But the thing that I am also asking people to do when it comes to our immigrant community is to go to downtown Framingham. Right now, our businesses in downtown, which is the most vibrant center of commerce in the city, is down by 40%, probably 50%. We have business owners that have lost $1 million. What we need to do as a committee is to go down there and buy from them, go to their restaurants, and support our immigrant community. That's the number one thing we can do.
Thank you, Mary Kate. All right, Ken?
Yeah, I want to echo a lot of what Mary Kate is saying again. I agree with a lot of what she's saying. Basically, I always get my hair cut in downtown Framingham at seven-star hairdresser with Roberto. He's my favorite hairdresser. And really, I've been noticing how much we have, he has less and less customers right now. And this is really, this is devastating for the businesses right now in downtown. Again, like what Mary Kate said, we have to support these areas, but we also have to allow people that are on the verge of becoming citizens, give them the help they need to become citizens. And I worked with Roberto to get his, to get his citizenship, and we applied together on the government website. And within a month and a half, within a month and a half, he got his citizenship. I mean, these, we just have to give the information out and try to help people as much as we can. We can't support ICE. We have to, we have to figure out how we can resist and make sure our local police officers are not supporting ICE.
Okay, and I will also be given quick follow-ups on this one. The welcoming ordinance has been mentioned, but would either of you support Framingham officially declaring itself as a sanctuary city, joining the ranks of other cities in Massachusetts like Boston? Mary Kate?
It's a great question. At this point, I don't see that there will be benefit for Framingham to become a sanctuary city, but I will say this, Framingham needs to do more to support its immigrant community, as I said. That is by making sure that public health, that our nurses are available to help with families when they are here, with whatever their health concerns are, that we are fully staffed in the schools, so that our new, new and current residents have the supports that they need to be successful here in Framingham. There are, we must resist to what is going on in this country, and what the Trump administration is trying to do to our families and to our communities. And it is also up to the government, I think the city government, to take more of a stand and to let people know the rights that our immigrant community have, and to remind people that this is just a civil offense and not the major, major crime that deserves to be sent to another country that the Trump administration likes to tell everybody that it is.
All right. Ken, I will give you a follow-up on that as well. Do you think Framingham should be declaring itself a sanctuary city?
Okay, so, I lean towards yes, but I haven't studied what it means financially and what it means to the city, so I definitely want to study, study the rules and all that, but I definitely do lean towards yes.
All right, awesome. Now we can get on to our next and final main question. You also get a little bonus at the end, too. Everybody does.
Hopefully.
Oh yeah, no, no, we spread the goodies around here. All right, so, last but not least, we also had a whole potpourri, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, of various budget-related questions sent in to us, and so we had to try and condense this all into one question. And so the question is, "Framingham can't fund everything at once. When the city faces tough choices between schools, public safety, infrastructure, and housing, what gets priority? And what would you be willing to delay or cut to keep the city's budget balanced?" Mary Kate?
So, I'm supposed to solve the budget problem in a minute 30? Okay. I think the most important thing is our schools and our students is to make sure that we are supporting our kids for success. For me, one of the most important things that we need to do on the schools is to expand high-quality early education. That is a number-one thing for me. We, our kids need, studies have shown that it's a game changer for our kids, right? And we want all of our kids to have success, to thrive. So, we must fund that. Secondly, we must also continue to work towards a elementary, elementary school in South Framingham. That's another project that I support 100%. So, I'm also dedicated to working with the District 3 school committee member and making sure that the school, what the school committee wants is that the council could support. Secondly, I'm looking at sustainability projects such as solar, planting trees, community gardens, things that will then give back to the community. I'm looking at things that we can invest in and that will give back to people and give back to the community. And of course, a lot of these energy-efficient sustainability projects will also give us money in the long run as well, and we will save, and that will be a big benefit as well. So, those are my two big things that I'm looking at at the moment when it comes to the budget, but I also want to make sure that we're keeping Framingham affordable for everyone, and that we are not pricing out the people who have built this community.
Thank you very much. Ken, budget priorities?
Sure. Budget, budget is a tough one, you know. I want to say, of course, we're not going to raise taxes because we want to, but, but that's, it's unpopular. Nobody's going to say that. But there's so many things we want to do, so many things we still need to do. Like, the climate crisis is like, very real, and it's happening now. It's very hot in October right now, and we're, we're going to get hit, and future generations are going to get hit by this. And we have to start preparing, we have to prepare our buildings, we have to prepare, and that's going to cost money. All these things are going to cost money, and cuts are going to have to happen from different places. To tell you, but, but still, you know, so I'm talking about all this, this is really the, the top priority for myself, and I think it should be for, for our community, and we should really invest everything we can in, in our commitment to the climate. You can reduce costs by putting more solar, by increasing the insulation for municipal buildings, by all these, all these different environment projects can really reduce costs. But also, we have to support the schools, and I especially want to make sure that we support, keep supporting Keith Tech. It's an amazing school. My daughter goes there, and she's studying to be a nurse, and that is such an amazing alternative to the high school, which is overcrowded. I really think we should invest in Keith Tech, preparing children and the new generation to a world where artificial intelligence is taking over a lot of these jobs.
All right, perfect. And then, great, we have one bonus question for everyone. This is, this is a 30-second one. This, this can be a yes or it could be a no, but. So, I have mentioned that in this upcoming November election, there is also a proposed vote to change the city's governing charter. And the more I read into that, the more I keep finding there is so much stuff in there. So, I would just like to get a quick, do you support voting to change the city's charter? If you say yes, we can keep it at a yes, but if there is a no, what is the deal breaker in that proposed charter change for you? Mary Kate?
Yes, and I just want to say one thing. It's very important, I worked on a piece of this about strategic planning and CIFOC, the Strategic Initiatives in Financial Oversight Committee, of which I was chair. We rewrote some of the language so that there's more milestones and participation from CIFOC in the budget and strategic planning process, so please vote yes. That is going to be critical for Framingham's government moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Ken, 30 seconds as well. Yes or no, and I guess also if you're yes, why?
I'm going to skip this question because I haven't studied the language of the charter, but if you follow my website, I'll, I'll report within a week.
Okay, thank you for that. That's, that's very fair. All right, so, now we can move on to the candidates' closing statements. Just as before, 90 seconds. Mary Kate, you will start, and then Ken will get to finish off this debate. Mary Kate?
Well, thank you so much. I hope everybody enjoyed those last 20 minutes. I have a new nephew. His name is Oliver. He's seven months old. I'm obsessed. But part of my obsession, besides the fact he's cute and probably should be modeling, is that I think a lot about his future. What is the country, what is the state, what is the town that I'm leaving for Oliver? And that's what motivates me in running for city council, is what is the Framingham I want to leave this next generation? I want to leave them one that is cleaner, that's livable, that they can get around on public transportation, or take their bike down the rail trail because we're the hub of trails. I want to leave him a place that he is proud of. And I think we have these moments now here in Framingham with where we are, a lot of questions are coming upon us that we need to make a decision on. And we've got to like, we've got to take fate into our own hands and not let other outside forces tell us what to do and who we are. I'm wearing a vest today. You see me wearing it often. Believe in Framingham. I really, really deeply believe in this community. I love this community. I want to serve every one of you, even if you don't live in District 3. I really appreciate Access Framingham again for holding this debate today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Ken, close us off.
Okay, cool. So, I've lived here for 15 years, had all the kids go through the Framingham system. I love our community. I love every, everything about this city. And as I'm going and knocking on doors and talking to the neighbors, I know that the number-one thing that my district cares about is overdevelopment in our district. And this is really what I'm, I'm committing myself to, helping my district. But I definitely want to work with developers, I want to work with city council, I want us to figure out how we can reinvigorate the downtown area. 135, you know, you're running through Hopkinton, you're running through Ashland. When you get to Framingham, it's very industrial. I think we can change this through redevelopment, by creating buildings that are mixed-use, by creating new buildings with cafes. It's going to be like a Riviera out there. It's going to be beautiful, and, and the apartments are going to be energy-efficient, and we can really revitalize by creating communities of commuters that are coming in and out of Boston, bringing a lot of business to the downtown area. And this is what I want to do. This is what I want to focus on. And a reminder again, I'm not taking any money from any developers or any special interests. I really believe in this, and I really believe in preserving our District 3, the beautiful farms, the beautiful fields, just, I love running through that, especially now in the fall. Get out there and enjoy a beautiful district, and help me preserve it.
All right. I just want to say again to the District 3 candidates, Mary Kate Feeney and Ken Weiss, thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
In a minute or so, we will have candidates Stephen Belcher and Michael Cannon join us on stage.
Oh, it's five minutes between rounds?
Oh, five minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Do what you got to do.
Do you prefer Steve or Stephen? Stephen? Oh, Steve, sorry, sorry, my bad. Do you prefer Mike or Michael? All right, since he's doing Steve, I'm going to keep it Mike, so they're both on the casual side. Level playing field. Oh, okay, okay, two, two, three, cool. Oh yeah, okay, cool. We are now moving on to our District 4 city council race between Steve Belcher and Mike Cannon. As with all the other races, left heads, right tails, to decide who will answer first. Doing this right now, coin flip. We've got tails. All right, Mike, you'll be starting us off for this round. You can begin. 90-second introduction. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Giuliano, and thank you to Access Framingham for having this, and to everybody for being here, and to all the candidates pulling papers. Every race in every election in Framingham should be contested. It's how, as a community, we get together and talk about how we're doing, what do we want to do better, what are we not doing a good job at, and where do we want to go? So, thank you to all of you and to your families for putting up with some of the headaches that come along with running for office. My name is Michael Cannon. I'm privileged to serve on your city council in District 4. If, if you know me, you know that I bring an independent, open-minded voice to the council. I certainly don't shy away from asking difficult questions or having uncomfortable conversations. In our first years together, you've seen me fight irresponsible development facing our neighborhoods, push for more funding for our seniors, the Callahan Center, more programming, staff, and resources. Work to make sure that we're doing everything we can to provide medical care in our community through the preservation of our hospital and the Lincoln Street Medical Office Building. And I'm delighted that we're going to have the opportunity to talk about some of these things tonight. We should do it, not just when there's an election or when there's a meeting, but throughout the year, because there's no shortage of things that we need done in our community, and there's no shortage of a desire for people to get involved. So, I'm grateful for the opportunity for us all to be here, and to Steve for allowing us to have this conversation.
All right, and since he was mentioned, Steve?
Oh, 100%. Hi, friends and neighbors. My name is Steve Belcher. You know, I'm proud to call District 4 my home. I moved here 11 years ago, and like you, I walk these streets, I shop in these shops, right? And I've raised my family here. And if I look familiar, it's probably because for over 10 years, I have been a nurse in our community. I've worked at four separate nursing homes in Framingham. I continue to work at two of them. I might have taken care of your, your parent, your spouse, your grandfather, your grandmother. And on, on the flip side, I do have a beautiful, wonderful eight-year-old daughter in the school system, which is really what pushed me into activism. I know we, we're not going to touch about the school system today, but I know a lot of people have questions about it and issues, and it's been an amazing ride. I'm also a veteran. 25 years ago, I raised my hand, and I said I would do no harm, and I would protect the citizens of the United States, and I believe that's 100% what, what needs to be done, but-
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mike. But anyways, I'm running for city council because I believe our community deserves strong and practical leadership, and leadership that listens and delivers. So, thank you, guys, for being here. I appreciate it, and I love you all. God bless you.
All right, so, you know the questions at this point, but always good to reread them. Framingham- Framingham is growing fast, but many residents worry that new development brings traffic strain on schools and rising rents. How do you draw the line between smart growth and overdevelopment? Furthermore, what specific kinds of projects would you be opposed to and say no for your district? Mike?
So one of the biggest challenges that we faced when we became a city, and when I ran for city council the first time, was the targeting of District 4. We have so much commercial activity in the district, in the area that comprises District 4. We were the target of a lot of irresponsible development. So for the first number of years on the council, fighting irresponsible development has been a huge priority, and we've done that together pretty successfully. But there is certainly, we need to balance a new need for housing, but also preserving our neighborhoods. I think if we're not very, very careful about it, and it's not just having a seat at the table, it's knowing how to use it. If we're not really careful, we end up acquiescing to developers who have much different priorities than the residents that I represent in our neighborhoods. You know, Shopper's World is coming up for redevelopment, and that's a series of very careful decisions that we need to be making together as a community. There are decisions that were made in conference rooms in the 1940s that we still live with today at Shopper's World. So if we're not very careful, we'll have a development that doesn't protect our neighborhoods, that caters to developers who are long gone once the ribbon is cut. And thankfully, I think we have a lot of commitment and a lot of interest in our neighborhoods to make sure that what we do in our community is good for Framingham, not just for developers. The deal breakers are the things that, you know, we need to make our process better. We've seen some pretty scary times that is the result of not including people in the discussion. These need to be very open, accessible, and transparent discussions about the future of our neighborhoods.
All right, thank you very much. Steve?
No, I agree with Councilman Cannon. Housing is one of the most pressing challenges in our city, and it's true, right? The state requires us to zone for certain areas, especially with the MBTA Act and everything like that. And we have to tread lightly. Now, as a veteran, I do believe we don't need more luxury apartments, right? We need spaces for citizens. We need spaces for our veterans. We've got 67 at-risk vets right now that are at risk of losing their own homes. We have elderly that we're pricing out of their market, where they have to sell their house because their spouse is in a nursing home right now. We need to make sure when we do, because it's not if, it's when the MBTA Act hits and when we build these buildings, we need to make sure that we're taking care of our own. That's Framingham natives, Framingham veterans, right? 100%. Then we need green spaces to go with this. You know, we've got beautiful Simpson Park. We need to start developing that, bringing in parking spaces, bringing in proper care, dredging that lake so it's a viable area for our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I do want to do a quick follow-up because Shopper's World was mentioned, and I hear that one all the time. So in 30 seconds, this is a brief rebuttal. What would your ideal vision be for future Shopper's World development? Mike?
So the most important thing is that it involves the neighborhoods. Shopper's World is one of those whole areas that impacts the entire community, not just the neighborhoods of District 4. So we need to learn from the mistakes that we've made in development in the past to make sure that we're bringing people in from the neighborhoods, so we're catering to them in what they want. We could very easily make a lot of money with developers building high-density apartment buildings, but I don't think there is a desire for that for the folks that live here, nor are the people looking for a place to live. So it's all about a transparent, accessible, public process.
All right, thank you. Steve?
Shopper's World is one of those areas, because again, we're really, really close to Route 9, very close to every community that can travel. And especially if we are talking about the MBTA community, then we need to be able to, we're going to have to increase the loop. We're going to have to do this responsibly, right? And responsibility is transparency. We need to make sure that our vehicles are ready, our drivers are ready, and the maintenance on those vehicles. But again, it's going to happen. There's nothing we can do about it.
All right, thank you. Also, just as a little note, I may have had Shopper's World on my mind because I had Kava earlier today, so that could have been something.
Thank you for patronizing the district.
Oh, oh, hey, hey.
It's Caldoor Road. Caldoor is not even a thing anymore.
Oh, oh, yeah, right. I'd love me some Shopper's World. All right, beautiful.
You look pretty young. Have you ever shopped at a Caldoor?
No, no, no. I'm young, but I feel old. I have a five and a three-year-old. It's exhausting. Yeah. Anyways, awkward transition, but Framingham is one of the largest immigrant communities in Massachusetts, yet fear has grown after recent ICE operations. What concrete steps should the city take to protect and support immigrant families? Mike?
You know, I think there's a political way to answer this question that is probably smarter for me politically, but I think it's important that we, as a community, have a really nuanced discussion about this, because I think there are some decisions that are being made at higher levels, which are impacting our neighbors and our communities very substantially. You know, when I talk to immigrant business owners, for example, and members of our immigrant community that I've worked with for years and years, they don't want, the folks that we read about that are getting arrested, the actual criminals, the folks that are criminals first and here undocumented second, they don't want them on our streets either. But when we read about them, so far, I see, there was a court order, I believe, in June that prohibited Massachusetts, I'm going to paraphrase ever so slightly, but the sentiment was you can't arrest someone that you're looking for at a courthouse or a jail. It makes it very difficult to do that in Massachusetts. So they're turned back into the neighborhood, and then ICE comes into the neighborhood, and it scares the hell out of people unnecessarily. There are better ways to do this, and I think we're so resistant, perhaps at the state level and locally, to collaborate and coordinate with folks. We need to do a better job at every level of government in discussing better ways to keep people safe, but also protecting the residents of our community. It's a very nuanced way to do it, and sometimes we get caught up in the, I'm going to trash this, and we shouldn't cooperate. It's very nuanced, and we need to have really thoughtful discussions about these seemingly minor details that make all the difference in the world for our local businesses and the members of our community that have been here building our community for years and years.
All right, thank you, Mike. Steve?
As a nurse in our community, and as a nurse in our nursing homes in our community, I have seen this firsthand affect us. As a Republican, I understand that there's a lot of, I will say, pushback, but not every Republican's a Republican like us. I remember on January 20th, locking the doors. I was the assistant director of nursing at a facility in Framingham, and locking the doors. And I told my staff, you do not let anyone in until they talk to me. If it's 11 to 7, if it's 7 to 3, if it's 3 to 11, you call me. I am a five-minute drive. I will stop this from happening, because this is harmful for our community. It is not smart the way we're thinking about this, and especially, but on the flip side, like Councilor Cannon said, you have to do this responsibly. We don't need to bring in more focus to Framingham. We need to protect those that we have here, that live here, that serve our community, right? These are responsible people, mostly. Now, if there are people out there that are criminals, then yes, we need to address that. But if these are law-abiding citizens, we need to help them. I know a woman, she's, for nine years it took her to get her license here, but she did it responsibly.
Thank you, Steve. And Mike, you were named, so you will be given a rebuttal to that.
It's something that we don't discuss enough publicly, and sometimes we're afraid to talk about it. It's complicated, it's cumbersome, and we sort of live in a world where if you, with good intentions, say the wrong thing, you kind of get in trouble. And I think we, as a community, need to have more thoughtful discussions about it and have some space, some safe spaces where we collectively to have difficult conversations about difficult topics, not just about immigration, but about everything. The immigrant community, by the way, wants to talk about things other than just immigration, and sometimes political people forget that.
All right, thank you. Cool. And I will ask a 30-second follow-up as well. You know, this one was coming. Should Framingham be declaring itself a sanctuary city? Yes or no?
No. You want to?
If you want to, go for it.
For, I think Mary-Kate Feeney said it very well, and others have alluded to it, too. I think there are very few people advocating for that in Framingham. I think it carries more risk than reward, but it's, you know, we need to discuss the issues very substantially and very publicly.
All right, thank you. Steve?
We'll bring too much attention to ourselves, to our residents, our community. It would be an absolute abomination during this regime, in my opinion.
All right, thank you. Cool. On to the last one. Framingham cannot fund everything at once. When the city faces tough choices between schools, public safety, infrastructure, and housing, what do you think should get priority? And would you be willing to delay or cut anything to keep the budget balanced? Mike?
I think there are always going to be more priorities and more pressures than resources. And I think for a number of reasons, we haven't done a good enough job looking at everything that we spend money on and all of the different ways that we do business as a municipality. You know, we've got a lot of redundancy throughout the enterprise. We've got a lot of the, you know, people taking care of buildings and grounds on this particular category of the spreadsheet, but also over here, we've got multiple finance departments and IT departments and human resources departments. And maybe that made great sense at one particular point in time, and maybe it makes sense now, but we, as elected officials and community leaders and professional staff, haven't really taken a deep dive into asking the questions. Okay, this is how we do it now, because we've always done it this way. Is this the best way to do it going forward? And, you know, it's a very substantial budget that has increased dramatically in recent years, and that's not likely going to change. There are always going to be more demands. If we're not looking for every opportunity to be more efficient and serve the public more effectively, we're going to be in a lot of trouble. We'll be faced with, you know, we've had the opportunity to move forward with a lot of wants. We're going to be not, we're not going to be faced with that luxury at some point. We'll have to make very difficult decisions. The people that are doing the jobs, by the way, in the Memorial Building and throughout the municipal enterprise, have wonderful ideas on how we can do things better without impacting public services while making our local government more efficient. We need to make sure that they're an integral part of the conversation.
All right, thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I do believe the city government needs to live within its means, and that is our budget. It must go forward. It must be approved through councilmen and councilwomen. And on top of that, it really, the city itself needs to be informed. You need to know where your tax dollars are going. There's ways to do that, right? We can have residents vote on capital spending. Portions, not every capital spending, but portions. Why don't we do that once a year? Hey, here's our proposed budget. This is what you're up against. Do you propose yes or no? And if not, where do you want that spending to go? We need a little bit more transparency with our city council. We need a little bit more transparency with our budget. Also, we need to push an online, user-friendly portal. Why doesn't every resident have the ability to go online and say, this is where I want to spend my money, right? You can do through polling. There's people that use it now. We're a young city, but it doesn't mean that we're a technology-bound city, right? We just need to make sure that we are asking the city residents, what do you want? Where do you want to put your money? Is it schooling? Is it DPW? Is it more cleaner living? Give the people a voice.
All right, thank you. And 30-second follow-ups on this one. Mike, what area stands out to you as the one that could most benefit from more efficient processes from a purpose of, you know, financial standpoint?
I think we have to look at absolutely everything that we do, because there's no part of the administration, whether it's DPW or our schools or parks and rec, everything. We should always have the thought of, this is how we do things today, but is this how we should do things going forward, and how could we make it better? And we need to live that. We don't live that right now. We do a lot of things because it's the way we've always done them.
All right, thank you. Steve?
Can you repeat the question? Sorry, I was listening to his response.
Oh, oh, no worries. You're good. Does any specific policy area in Framingham stand out to you as one that could most benefit from efficiency?
I believe communication. Communication through our divisions of our department heads, right? So my proposed act would be, we've got nine city councilors. Why don't one of them take three divisions? So you take DPW, Veterans Council, and Board of Health, and I take yada, yada, yada. And we work together, and instead of sitting in front of the city council when we do finger pointing, instead, we're already ready, and we're already had that communication done.
All right, thank you. And then we get on to the bonus question. Just 30 seconds for this one. Yes or no, do you support the changes to the city charter? Why or why not?
I do, yeah. A lot of work went into that, and it was probably, you know, one of the most difficult things that those individuals, and thank you to them, because it was exhausting work and very detailed. My only note at the end of it, the thing that I was sort of not happy with was more process-related. I like the sentiment of having the climate officer as part of it, but I, just as a process perspective, I would rather that any position go through a budget process the way other ones do, because that role may change in ways, may evolve before, you know, it comes up for charter review. But yes, please vote yes on the charter changes.
All right, thank you. Steve?
Unfortunately, I'm a no on this, because there is not, and like Councilor Cannon said, there's not a facility, resource to say, what are we spending on this? What is this going to look like down the road? Because again, everybody deserves a raise. We all deserve a cost-of-living raise. What is this going to look like in 10 years? I need to do more research on it, but I'm not opposed to saying no. Right now, I'm definitely a no, though.
All right, thank you. And Mike, you were named, so I will give you a rebuttal on that.
Yeah, so just to provide a little comfort, everything in there will go through the standard budget process that hopefully will be more transparent as we go forward and more accessible through technology. And the 11 members of the city council, as well as the mayor, will have the ability to do the public process that goes along with it. I don't, I don't think it'll, if we do a good job running the municipality, the charter changes will only help with that, but it's not a more expensive charter, and the commission that went through it was pretty careful in making sure that that happened. Adding that one position, I suppose, could add a little delta, but that will go through its process. I wish, if I knew, I didn't think we could bring notes, but I would have brought the details with me.
Oh, okay. Oh, wow. All right, and I will also let you close us off. Mike, 90 seconds.
Well, thank you. And Giuliano, you did a great job tonight and last week as well, and to Access Framingham. We need to have more of these conversations, not just when there's an election happening, but throughout the course of the year, because something is always happening in Framingham. And Steve, thank you for pulling the papers and getting the signatures. It's not an easy process. It shouldn't be an easy process, but you're bothering people, you're getting signatures, and getting involved in our community is something that we need everybody to do, certainly so we can have more conversations like this. Framingham needs to be an easier place to grow your business, to set up shop, to open a restaurant. It needs to be a better place to be able to walk to school. It needs to be safe and have transportation. I've worked really hard to make sure that more people are involved in our discussions. It wasn't that long ago when all the decisions in our community seemed to be made by one little corner of town with really good intentions. But with district representation, I think we're doing a better job, and it's really important to me, and you've seen through my work since we've been a city, that I want to make sure that our seniors have a voice, that our veterans have a voice, and that our community of persons with disabilities all have a meaningful voice in the decision-making that happens in their community. And I think we can only do a better job at that. I've been able to successfully push for more funding for our veterans, and we're doing outreach right now that we weren't doing before. So we're finding veterans that had earned benefits in Vietnam or Korea even, that gave up on getting what was entitled for them to receive, and they're now doing that because people are working together. And there's so much more we can do together, and I'm very proud to represent District 4 and be a part of this community.
All right, thank you. And then, Steve, you will have the final word for this portion of the debate night.
Well, that's a lot of pressure, so thank you for giving me that. I'd like to thank Councilor Cannon.
You can call me Mike, by the way.
I know, but again, also, being a veteran, being as your state third vice commander for the American Veterans Association, being your chaplain for the state for the American Veterans Association, I really do believe that we have a serious problem in Framingham. And we have, the last time I talked to the VSO, we have at least 67 at-risk vets that are going to lose housing, losing funding. Last year alone, I was able to help, thanks to Bob Downing and other people, to raise 220 turkeys for Metro West Region, along with $1,000 in gift cards. We've got to check our veterans. We've got to check our elderly housing, right? We're pricing ourselves. We're pricing the people that built this city, that built Edmunds Road, that built all these all these cities, right? And all these churches, including the one we're sitting in right now. We need to protect them to make sure that when they go in and they need health care, we are here. We're stopping the buck. We're helping them, and we are absolutely making sure that we can stay in our homes. We can be here. We can be here for Framingham. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes the District Four debate between Mike Cannon and Steve Belcher. Thank you, gentlemen. And I have officially been told it is three minutes now between each round, so we will come back in three.
[inaudible]
Awesome. Thank you.
Sorry, it was far away. All right. Sound access up here.
Thank you. Oh, the Wonder Woman songs? I actually, I wish there was a reason to this. I actually had to snag them from the girlfriend, because I was out, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, the Wonder Woman songs? I actually, I wish there was a reason to this. I actually had to snag them from the girlfriend, because I was out, so, yeah, thank you. All right. Brandon. All right. Hello, everyone. We are now moving on to the District Two race, in which we have Brandon Ward versus Carol Spack. I will now be flipping the coin, digitally, of course, to decide who goes first. So if you don't like it, you can blame Google. We have tails again. All right. I promise this is not rigged. Carol, you can start us off with opening statements. Thank you.
I was going to bet on heads. I thought, what are the chances? I'm taking up my own time. I'd like to introduce myself. I've met many people while I've been out walking, knocking on doors for our district. I'm Carol Spack. You might remember me from my planning board service between 2003 and 2012. I grew up in Framingham. I left after high school, vowed I would never come back, never say never, and in 1993, I returned, and I have been here since. My training is in law and planning. My current professional work is full-time as an antique map dealer. I love history. I love research. My political activism in the neighborhood, I live in Pinefield, is to create a grassroots nonprofit. It was called Potter Water Neighborhood Association. In my law practice, I represent artists, nonprofits, small businesses, and do zoning and planning work. And that nonprofit, which was very effective with a planning board process, taught me that people turn out. They turn out when there are threats from development. And I volunteered my service, actually, for the PUD project. What I stand for, and I think this election is about values, it's not about parties, it's about values. And my values are that I am accountable, I am fact-based, and I am fair, and I am committed to representing each of us in a government which must be transparent. It's not a choice.
Thank you, Carol. Brandon?
Thank you, Giuliano. Thank you, Access Framingham, for putting this on, and thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Brandon Ward. I'm the current city councillor for District Two. I'm really excited to be running for reelection to continue to serve the residents of District Two. My family moved to Framingham when I was in the fourth grade. We moved around a lot when I was a kid. When I landed in Framingham, I found a community that ultimately became really special to me. It gave me the opportunity to succeed, and I'll never be able to repay that or thank the community enough for that. I went through the school system. I spent a professional career. I continue to spend a professional career in nonprofits, in government, in education. And when I moved back to Framingham six years ago, I was looking for ways to get involved to continue to give back. I bring my life experiences, my values, and my perspective to the city council. I show up every meeting with a thoughtful, nuanced perspective. I'm someone who's collaborative. I'm someone who's inclusive and equitable, and I'm someone who wants to bring fresh and new ideas to our city. I'm looking and running through, I'm running for reelection to continue to do that, to continue to be that voice, and to continue to work on the projects that are meaningful and valuable to me, supporting our schools, improving quality of life for Saxonville, finishing the McGrath Square rebuild project, and continuing to fund our trails and our parks and help my neighbors, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brandon. Heard a little bit of feedback. I think it's fixed now, though. All right. By now, you know the first question that's coming up, and of course, the first question has to be on development. And, you know, standard introductory statement, Framingham is growing fast, but many residents worry that new development brings traffic, strain on schools, and rising rents. How do you personally draw the line between smart growth and overdevelopment? Furthermore, what specific kinds of projects would you be opposed to and say no to for your district? Carol, start us off, please.
With all deference to the moderator, Framingham's population is dropping year to year, and our school population is dropping year to year. And I think that statement that we're growing reveals a bias and the visibility of immigration growing. And I am very keen to call a bias when I see it. I am fact-based. We have to respond to what is actually happening. And on the planning board, my philosophy about development was it has to be good for the community. It has to follow the zoning bylaw, and it has to be consistent with our master plan. When I was chair of the planning board, we approved 99% of our projects, but we approved them because we took the time to make sure they were consistent with community values. I support citywide zoning, not project-by-project ad hoc zoning. I support zoning by the law, not by variance, not by exception, not by grandfathered uses. And I've brought this enlarged print today. This is from our Department of Development. It's called Planning and Development, but it's a development advocacy department. This is McGrath Square. I don't know how many people are aware that the 85% design development project concept has been set aside for this concept, which involves removing the house at the corner of Concord and Danforth. And I am circulating in the audience right now a copy of this for everyone. I challenge the incumbent on his statement that he believes in open, clear, and inclusive government.
Thank you, Carol.
This has been at work since the first half of '24.
Brandon. Thank you for the question. So for development to work for any, for any neighborhood in our community, there needs to be community input. There needs to be a community conversation. And ultimately, if anything is to go forward, it needs to be approved by the community. It needs to fit the community character. That's what's most important, that what comes into our community is what our residents want. And ultimately, it's about holding developers accountable, that if there are impacts on our infrastructure, on our water infrastructure, on our sewer infrastructure, if there's more traffic, if it's going to affect our school population, that they're held accountable and pay mitigation money to support that. And that's what I've been advocating for on the city council. I've been a proponent of reducing the central business district. I've been someone who's fought against rezoning in Knobscot, because I didn't feel like it fit the character of Knobscot. I ran on that two years ago. I've been opposed to it my entire time on the council. I'm still running on no to rezoning in Knobscot. With that said, I'm also not naive to think that development is not going to take place. It is going to take place, and that's why we need to engage in a productive and collaborative conversation with developers. And just to quickly touch, because I was mentioned by name by my competitor, I am familiar with the plan to straighten out the intersection with McGrath Square by buying 1639 Concord Street. I sat down with the owner of the Mills when that idea came to fruition from her and connected her with the mayor so they could have that conversation.
Thank you, Brandon. We'll continue this back and forth. Don't you worry. Carol?
I'd like some rebuttal time on this.
Yes.
Brandon's hand shot up to suggest the Pinefield Shopping Center be subject to the MBTA High Density Zoning of 20 units to the acre. I have spoken to the business owners in Pinefield. Their rents were doubled when the new owner purchased the property, and he purchased the property for $4 million over the assessed value. What was he told? That the rezoning, that was in November of '24, there'd be rezoning, and those businesses are going to have to move out. Their rents have been doubled, and they've been told January they're going to go up and might double again. That's impacts on real people and real lives.
Thank you, Carol. Brandon can respond now. 30 seconds.
I'm not sure what Carol's referring to, if she's alluding that someone tipped the new purchaser of Pinefield off to something. That certainly was not me. I'm someone who's an advocate for our community and what's right for our neighborhood. Pinefield is a privately-owned property. It's currently B2 zoning, which allows commercial, it allows mixed use by special permit, and so it's imperative that we have productive conversations with the developer so that the neighborhood is protected.
All right. Carol, you were named, and this is clearly an important project for your district, so you will be given another 30-second rebuttal. Thank you.
The greatest compliment I received on the planning board was the go-to development attorney saying to me, after five years, you are fair. I know that your position is as an advocate for the residents, but you are fair. And that's my commitment to developers, to small businesses, to individuals. I don't see fairness in our government right now.
All right. Thank you. On to the next question. As you know, this one is an immigration question. Framingham is one of the largest immigrant communities in Massachusetts, and fear has grown after recent ICE operations. What concrete steps should the city take to protect and support immigrant families? Carol?
The foundational principle in the United States Constitution is that there are citizens and there are persons. And the 14th Amendment, which is the due process clause, protects persons. And we must remember, in every decision our government makes, and in every private decision we make, that every person includes even people who are here illegally, undocumented, call it what you want, that persons, and that's why every child in the United States by right can go to our public schools because of their status under the Constitution as persons. So our police policy, our school policy, our city hall policy, and his neighbors' our policy. I have befriended a young man from Ukraine, and I asked, how can I help? We can reach out. And he said, learning English. And for two years, he's come to my house for dinner, and my companion and I, we cook dinner together, and then we read or we talk. And that's another personal aspect of genuinely developing relationships and supporting people who are here as immigrants. Framingham has been a city of immigrants from day one.
All right. Thank you. Brandon?
Yeah, I think it's a really important question. I think it's a really challenging question, because our values, my values, and what I want our community to be, I want our community to do is directly at odds with what's taking place by ICE and by the federal government. And so we've taken steps through the city council and the welcoming ordinance to explicitly say that our city staff, our police department, in no way will help ICE. I was proud to be at that hearing two years ago when that was passed, and to, you know, as a private citizen at that time, to have supported it. I think the most important thing we can do is to wrap our arms as a community and make sure that our social service providers, that our immigrant advocates have the support and the resources that they need, because it's having real impacts on our immigrant businesses, on our downtown, and our community, and it's also creating unnecessary fear. My sister-in-law is a Brazilian immigrant. She's scheduled to become a US citizen later this month. It's a really exciting moment, not only for her, but also for our family, because there's immense potential impact that's falling on everyone within our community, and it's creating a really challenging and horrible situation that I hope ends really soon, frankly.
All right. Thank you. We'll be doing this next part of the immigration question as a 30-second follow-up, because, you know, development went a little over time. Carol, yes or no, would you support Framingham declaring itself a sanctuary city? Why or why not?
I would not. I don't think it brings advantages to immigrants who are subject to these terrible ICE policies. What's happening is horrific in the United States, and I would concentrate on what we can do, standing with other cities, with Boston is an excellent example, so that it isn't, if you step over this boundary, you're going to be better off. We're going to have an entire safety net of cities standing and defending persons and personal liberty.
All right. Brandon?
No, right now, that's not what I'm hearing from our immigrant advocates and our immigrant community, and I think it's important to provide them support on initiatives that they see as most important. I think there's been a reasonably thoughtful discussion around whether it would help our immigrant community, and also whether it would actually hurt our immigrant community by attracting more attention. And so I think there's real nuance to that question. I wouldn't be opposed to having the conversation, but I think there's real nuance to taking a step like that.
All right. Thank you. The last big question will deal with the budget. And Framingham cannot fund everything at once. When the city faces tough choices between schools, public safety, infrastructure, and housing, what do you believe should get priority? And what would you be willing to delay or cut to keep the budget balanced? Carol?
I look at the budget process somewhat like I look at a puzzle, and you do the edge pieces first. You can see those. And if I may enlarge the context here, we have an income column and we have an expense column. I think we need to study our assessing practices. Framingham has one of the biggest commercial tax bases in Middlesex County. Why is that not providing the income that this community lawfully is entitled to? Framingham has one of the highest residential tax rates in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Why is that the case when we have such a large commercial tax base? Why did the buyer of the Framing, of the Pinefield Shopping Center pay $4 million over the assessed value? Why did the buyer of Stop &amp; Shop pay a gigantic percentage over the assessed value? So I would, I would start a study of our assessment practices for commercial. On the expense side, I don't know where you can cut. I think we have to work on the income side. The town staff is doing an exceptional job. The library is doing an exceptional job. The school department is working with resources that are too low. So I do think we have to look at the nature of our commercial property. That also includes rental residential. In my neighborhood, there are many houses that are rented, so I would look at taxable status and assessed value to increase income.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Brandon?
When I approach the budget process, I like to think about it as where do our values lie? And for me, that's supporting our education, our school system. That's the most direct way to put people on the path of success. And I was proud, before I started on the city council, to be on the KEIF Tech School Committee, and to also work in the higher ed field prior to being the executive director of Leadership Metro West. I think the more we can fund early education, the more we can fund dual-language programs, something that really sets Framingham apart and utilizes our assets, and also that we can support the new Southside Elementary School, and potentially even one day, a new KEIF Tech is really valuable. In terms of what gets cut, if we get ourselves in a tough, tough place, unfortunately, it's probably capital expenses, and it's probably quality-of-life improvements. And so that's a really difficult and challenging situation that we'll have to potentially discuss at some point. One way to mitigate that and one way to avoid that is seeing our new growth increase. And the easiest way to do that, in my opinion, is through commercial growth of the largest current employers in our city. So being good friends to TJX, being good friends to Sanofi, being good friends to Bose. Their success is our success, and it takes the tax burden off our residents, and it puts us on a, on a path to, to level budgets.
All right. Thank you.
Can I have a follow-up on that? Short?
No, you were not named. My apologies. Little, little time crunch. On to the last minor question. For both candidates, would you support the proposed changes to the Framingham Charter? Why or why not? Carol?
Yes. There's three important changes. One is the budgeting process, which I did want to speak to, and that will become a --
not providing the income that this community lawfully is entitled to? Framingham has one of the highest residential tax rates in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Why is that the case when we have such a large commercial tax base? Why did the buyer of the Pinefield Shopping Center pay $4 million over the assessed value? Why did the buyer of Stop &amp; Shop pay a gigantic percentage over the assessed value? So I would start a study of our assessment practices for commercial. On the expense side, I don't know where you can cut. I think we have to work on the income side. The town staff is doing an exceptional job. The library's doing an exceptional job. The school department is working with resources that are too low. So I do think we have to look at the nature of our commercial property. That also includes rental residential. In my neighborhood, there are many houses that are rented, so I would look at taxable status and assessed value to increase income.
All right, thank you, Carol. Brandon?
When I approach the budget process, I like to think about it as where do our values lie? And for me, that's supporting our education, our school system. That's the most direct way to put people on the path of success. And I was proud, before I started on the City Council, to be on the KEIF Tech School Committee and to also work in the higher ed field prior to being the Executive Director of Leadership Metro West. I think the more we can fund early education, the more we can fund dual-language programs, something that really sets Framingham apart and utilizes our assets, and also that we can support the new Southside Elementary School, and potentially even one day, a new KEIF Tech is really valuable. In terms of what gets cut, if we get ourselves in a tough place, unfortunately, it's probably capital expenses, and it's probably quality-of-life improvements. And so that's a really difficult and challenging situation that we'll have to potentially discuss at some point. One way to mitigate that and one way to avoid that is seeing our new growth increase. And the easiest way to do that, in my opinion, is through commercial growth of the largest current employers in our city. So being good friends to TJX, being good friends to Sanofi, being good friends to Bose. Their success is our success, and it takes the tax burden off our residents, and it puts us on a path to level budgets.
All right, thank you.
Can I have a follow-up on that? Short?
No, you were not named. My apologies. A little time crunch. Onto the last minor question. For both candidates, would you support the proposed changes to the Framingham Charter? Why or why not? Carol?
Yes, there's three important changes. One is the budgeting process, which I did want to speak to, and that will become a more transparent process, because the budget will go to the full City Council, and that's essential, rather than being just in the Finance Committee. It will permit people in the audience and on the full City Council to vet it. Number two, there will be a five-year term for the charter as amended, so the next charter amendments will not be 10 years, they will be five years. There will be, third, a new environmental office and officer, and it will raise the priority of the environment and ecology, open space, and wildlife, which right now has a status that is under this table and under the tablecloth. So I think creating that office is very important.
All right, Brandon?
Yes. I'm voting yes, and I encourage everyone else to vote yes on that question. There was a really robust community conversation and process that took place around ultimately what changes were proposed. Actually, District Two resident Adam Blummer led that process, and I cannot commend him enough for the thoroughness with which he attacked that. Those recommendations then came to the City Council, where they went through another really robust conversation. And I would echo that the budget timeline changes are going to be really helpful. The additional strategic and Cyphoc changes are going to be really helpful. The creation of a chief sustainability and climate officer at a cabinet-level position is going to really elevate what we can do in terms of sustainability, in terms of supporting solar projects. That's going to be game-changing, to have that seat at the table with division heads. And so overall, I think there's lots of really positive changes put forth with the charter changes, and I encourage everyone to vote yes on it.
All right, thank you. And now we can get on to the candidates concluding statements. Carol, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. My concluding statement is to first thank the moderator for doing the smooth job. I'm running for this office because I want to represent each resident of Framingham. My role as a District Two City Councilor will be to bring my specific knowledge of having lived here a long time and knowing people here perhaps better, but my responsibility is to the entire city of Framingham. The City Council is a branch of government. I've heard it referred to as being part of a team with the mayor. We're part of a branch of government. The mayor is a branch of government. The Red Sox is a team. The Celtics are a team. The Patriots are a team. We sit, and we are the legislators in a branch of government, and it is our responsibility to be a counterweight to the mayor and to work with the other parts of municipal government. So we have a coherent functioning whole. I have a long track record of working with people from all backgrounds. I could not have from scratch built my own law practice in 1989 if I wasn't able to work with people, and I wasn't able to help them reach their success. My success is not tangible. My success is your success, and it's our government delivering its promise to be an open, democratic, and fair government.
All right, thank you. Brandon, finish us off.
Yeah, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm really excited to be running for reelection, and I hope you'll consider me and vote for me. I have spent the last two years making myself available to the residents of District Two and advocating on behalf of the residents of District Two. I answer my phone. I respond to emails. I show up at community events. I lead community events. I've been the president of Friends of Saxonville for the last three years. We brought the mayor to Saxonville for a meeting. We brought Sarkey Sarkisian, the director of the Department of Economic Development, to Saxonville. We've led conversations around McGrath Square and the McGrath Square rebuild. I'll continue to do that work, and I'm excited to continue to do that work. There are so many projects in District Two that need to get over the finish line, including McGrath Square, but there are also so many successes that we've had in the last two years. I was proud to see Framingham and to advocate for Framingham rejoining the Mass Municipal Association, to provide better professional development for our staff. I was proud to advocate for our CPC project, to see the Carol Getchell Trail be turned into a fully ADA-accessible trail, to see the Saxonville-Athenaeum get funding for an exterior envelope rebuild. And there's so much more that I continue and hope to continue to advocate for. Everything to upgrades to Reardon Park, upgrades to Simpson Park, fixing the speeding on Danforth Street. I've had so many conversations with DPWR around how we fix that problem through different creative solutions. And so I hope you'll vote for me, and I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you, Brandon, and thank you very much, Carol, for this evening's District
Oh.
Hmm.
Oh, she's saying it.
Oh, that's for you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I just get that urge to, like, go right in. Thank
No, no, no. You can probably read them off for me at this point. If only. I'm Natick, one town over. So close. Yeah, hey, makes my job easier. And I'm going to say, just so you know, like, it's still same 90 seconds and everything, like, standard time.
Yep.
If we can get some shh before I have to break out the dad voice, that would be greatly appreciated.
You get a dad voice now?
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. I had to buy a new belt because my daughter ruined my belt this morning, so hopefully, you know, dad voice doesn't come back out. All right, all right. I love my daughter, Victoria. She's awesome. She's a little wild, though, but she's great. Little ball energy. Keeps you on your toes.
Three and five are great ages.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's like, keeps you on your toes is the best and the worst part at the same time, right? Such a duality. Anyways, hello. We are now on to the last City Council election for District Eight, which has Leslie White Harvey versus John Stephanini. However, only John was able to make it for tonight. And so out of respect to the three great groups of candidates that just went under the traditional timeframes, I will also be honoring the 90 seconds for each question for John. So, John, start us off. 90-second opening statement, please.
Good evening, and thank you to Access Framingham for convening this discussion. My name is John Stephanini. I've spent the past 30 years volunteering in our community as a coach, as a teacher, as a member of a board, running for elected office, pro bono work for people in the community, because I believe in Framingham. I believe that every single person in our community needs to have a voice in the process. That means we need to be more transparent, more open, more participatory. And we talk about listening. Listening is something you have to do actively. You have to seek people out, and you have to figure out how you listen to them. Every year I've run for office or volunteered, I've done surveys. I am accessible through email, through my telephone. Both are available on my website, johnstefanini.org. You'll see lots and lots of discussions about what goes on. I've mailed to folks in the district a map, which lays out my thinking on the district, because people ask, "What is the district?" Please, I welcome those comments and that piece, because the most important thing we need to do as leaders is build community, make sure our institutions and our individuals have the resources and the connections to be as active as they can be.
All right, thank you, John. Onto the first question, which you definitely know by this point. Framingham is growing fast, but many residents worry that new development brings traffic, strain on schools, and rising rents. How do you draw the line between smart growth and overdevelopment? Furthermore, what specific kinds of projects within your district would you be willing to say no to?
So development starts and ends with community process. We need to be more transparent and more interactive. In District Eight, through this MBTA process, I convened and participated in almost every planning board and council meeting on the subject, and encouraged my neighbors and organized folks to participate. We convened a series of community meetings through our neighborhood association, where we had more than 100 local residents. We met with the city departments and went back and forth, and when the zoning was done, for at least the section of the community that interacted with us, we had scratched out mega apartments. We had put in meaningful two-and-a-half, three-and-a-half-story buildings to deal with dilapidated buildings along the Route 135 corridor and in downtown Framingham. So the process, by contrast, did not work in other parts of the community. The council met for two years and didn't have a single vote on a single proposal. Think about that for a moment. We need to have a process where people register their votes, participate in the process, and residents are engaged and we're interactive. That's what I'm committed to. That's the way I've worked in every role I've ever been in.
All right, thank you. Onto the next question. We have the immigration round. Framingham is one of the largest immigrant communities in Massachusetts, yet fear has grown after recent ICE operations. What concrete steps should the city take to protect and support immigrant families? John?
We genuinely are a community of immigrants, whether it's Russian or Italian, Irish or German, and we need to do our part to make sure that our institutions, our churches, our schools, our places of commerce are safe, open, and accessible for residents. That's challenging with the preemptive authority of our federal government and in certain instances. The welcoming ordinance that was talked about earlier, I authored that welcoming ordinance, and it protects and directs our schools and our police department to make sure that they've taken steps to make sure that those places are not cooperating outside of a criminal warrant, and that those places are as safe and as open and as accessible as they can be. In addition to that, we need to make sure that we're meeting with and collaborating with our local institutions so that they know their rights and they know what can be done. I've participated in a lot of programs with local churches and with local institutions. We need to make sure that Brace, the Brazilian-American Association, Downtown Framingham, Inc., Framingham Business Association, and others have the kind of knowledge and resources that they need to do this. What's happening to our immigrant community is just outrageous, and I think often, if my immigrant grandparents went through something similar, I probably would not be here today.
All right, thank you. And I will be giving you the follow-up everybody else got, just to make sure everybody's on record.
The answer is no.
Okay.
And the answer is, it's not a, as much as I give you a quick answer, it's something that, I have to say, requires a lot of thought. And I come down as no, because the burden on our community in the spotlight would be far greater than any benefit by putting a little tag on us. But we need to do everything we can to show folks that we are wrapping our arms around those most vulnerable in our community and giving them a giant hug and helping them any way we can.
Yes, all right, thank you. And if anybody is just, like, watching in right now, the question was, "Should Framingham be a sanctuary city?" John's been studying the question, so he knew what was coming. Wonderful. All right. Last but not least, I'm sure you know this one as well, but I'll read it out. Framingham can't fund everything at once. When the city faces tough choices between schools, public safety, infrastructure, and housing, what gets priority? And what would you be willing to delay or cut if required to keep the budget balanced?
So Mary-Kate got this right. You have 90 seconds to answer a $400 million budget. The simple answer is, it is a blueprint, every budget is, about our values. And so the things that are most important to us, we need to fund. We can never fund everything we want to fund, but we do need to look at the revenue side. We need to look at what we can bring in for additional revenues without burdening our taxpayers to the point of not being affordable. We need to do a performance audit on our entire government, as the charter laid out and mandated, to look at areas where we can consolidate, areas where we can get efficiencies, so we can spend more dollars where we want to. Number one, our schools. Number two, we have to keep our community safe. We need to make sure our public safety is where it needs to be, and we have to find places and ways to fund those things that are quality-of-life issues. Things like the arts, the theaters, the parks, so that people can enjoy and be part of those beautiful public resources we have all over our community, whether it's Simpson Park or Washakam or Cushing. We need to prioritize our resources. I believe with a $400 million budget, we have the assets and the resources to do what we need to do. We just need to be a little bit more efficient, and we need to make sure we're prioritizing them to what we wish to do most, which means we need to continuously reevaluate it.
All right, thank you. And since a lot of the candidates did have, like, 30-second rebuttals back and forth, I do want to give you an extra 30 seconds on this one, out of fairness. So as a follow-up question, do you have anything that immediately comes to mind in terms of areas where Framingham could improve on the revenue side of the equation?
Certainly. If you look at new growth, that's the area where we are encouraging local businesses to grow. So when Bose, TJX grow their businesses, we get additional revenues out of that. We are lagging behind our competitors, Marlboro, Waltherm, Natick. If we had the same level of growth Marlboro had this last year, we would have had a 0% increase this last year. New growth is the single biggest area to grow our budget. We need to work with our local businesses, like the Saxonville Mills, to help them grow their value so that we grow our tax base.
Thank you, John. And then the bonus question for 30 seconds. Do you support the proposed changes to the city's charter? Yes or no?
Absolutely. As an active participant in the charter process and one of the authors of the charter itself, I think that Adam Blummer and the group that came together did a spectacular job. The changes are focused on increasing, in a nuanced way, transparency around the budget process. I think bringing more eyes and more light on that. There was a conversation earlier about having an interactive budget process. Arlington, Cambridge, and a few other communities do just that, to give people more engagement in how we spend our dollars.
All right, thank you, John. And you can close us off. 90 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again. I want to comment for a minute about the state of our politics in our country, in our state and in our community. And the chaos in Washington, D.C. is seeping into our community. It seeps in in subtle ways, like teaching us that we should be divided, because really, that's what is the better way to deal with it, that we should avoid conflict and controversy and conversation. The reality couldn't be further from the truth. I've spent my life collaborating with folks and working with everyone. During the charter process, we were talking about, Joel Winnett, after every meeting, would meet with me for an extended period of time, and he would write me lengthy emails, and we'd meet for coffee. And one of the charter commissioners said to me, "You know, he isn't supporting us, and I don't think he even likes you." I said, "Well, yeah. Does that matter?" I signed up for this job. If you want this job, you need to work with everyone. That means you have to listen. That means you have to actively listen and engage people in a conversation to get a better product. We gave Joel credit in the foreword to the charter, because our charter was better because of his input, even though he didn't vote for it. We have to have the same approach in government. We need to look at our neighbors that we agree with and disagree with and work together so that we can govern our community and prioritize our dollars as best we can with our limited resources.
All right, thank you very much, John, and thank you very, very, very much to all of the candidates who have come here tonight for the City Council debates. Thank you so much. Again, those are Districts Two, Three, Four, and Eight. They will be having elections on November 4. They will be having elections on November 4th. Thank you. We will be having a five-minute break while we set up the school committee debates. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Oh, no, no, no. All right. Hello, everyone. We are now moving on to the second portion of the evening, which will be the contested school committee races for District 2 and 6. Just like the city council races, the ordering for the school committee races were decided by a random number generator, just so happens to be sequential for this one. So, we will start with District 2 and then move on to District 6. Same time rules apply. 90-second opening statement. You have 90 seconds to respond to my questions, just as with the other questions. These were based on solicitation from the communities in Framingham. If one of the candidates is named, they will be given a 30-second rebuttal time, and then we will do 90-second closing statements. And I will again be deciding candidate ordering based on coin toss. Left heads, right tails. I keep getting tails on this one, so I'm kind of paranoid it's starting to look rigged. But let's go. Let's go. What is it? We got a heads. All right. So, ooh, all right. So, District 2, Lorena Tovar versus David Gordon. Lorena, start us off, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much to Access Framingham for this opportunity and to all the staff that are here tonight. Really appreciate it. My name is Lorena Tovar, and I'm running for school committee because I want every child in Framingham to feel that the city believes in them, no matter where their family comes from or how connected they are. My husband's family has been in this town for over a century. His mother taught special education at Fuller for 20 years, and my father-in-law was the former police chief. His name is Brent Larrabee, and very proud to mention him tonight. So, I really understand how the city works, and I've seen the power structures that have shaped this city really for generations. In my professional life, I've spent many years at MIT, working to help students and faculty navigate key procedures efficiently and accurately. And my campaign has really been grounded on four key priorities: student achievement, educator retention and support, accountability and transparency, and last but not least, and they're not really in order, but families and community voices. I believe our district deserves more inquiry, and I'm prepared to ask the tough questions.
Thank you, Lorena. David?
I want to say thank you to Access Framingham and thank you to our moderator. Appreciate what you're doing. Good evening, everyone. I'm David Gordon, and I'm honored to be running for reelection to District 2 School Committee. This work is deeply personal to me. I grew up in Framingham. I grew up in the Framingham schools. I went to Blocks. I spent time at Stapleton. I went to Hemingway. I went to Walsh, and I'm a graduate of Framingham High School. My children now attend here, and my family remains rooted here. My mother is still in Framingham, and Framingham is a better part of our lives, for our whole lives, and we are excited to... I'm excited to be a part of this. This experience grounds everything I do. As a parent, a neighbor, a public servant, I'm committed to ensuring that every child in Framingham receives high-quality, student-centric education. Over the past three years, on the committee, as the chair of the finance committee, I focused on transparency, fiscal responsibility, and aligning resources directly with student needs. Families and taxpayers deserve open communications, careful stewardship, and I've worked to ensure every dollar was spent wisely and with purpose. I am also proud of the progress we made. However, more work needs to be done. If we elected, I'll continue to focus on the issues that matter most. Those issues include...
Thank you, David. All right. We will go on to the first from the series of questions. And again, I do want to state, the same three will be asked for both races. So, you know, no different treatment for anyone. The first one, to start off. In terms of education-related questions, this is the, you know, area that we got the most inquiry about. And so, Framingham has faced teacher turnover, staff shortages, and issues with student enrollment in recent years. What do you think is driving people to leave? And what's your plan to make Framingham a district where both students and educators want to stay? Lorena?
Yeah, I think we really need to equip teachers with the resources they need in order to thrive. Teachers need to be provided with coaching and excellent professional development in order to be able to do their jobs well. I think there also needs to be better communication between caregivers and educators and administration so that caregivers understand what is happening with their children and with their... just with school. I think it's really hard to... It can be really hard to navigate the school system as a first-time parent or caregivers who are meeting that role. And so, yeah, I think those two go hand in hand.
All right. Thank you, Lorena. David?
I'm glad you picked out those. My thought process is, I would agree with Lorena, is that we need to focus on education, educators, and resources that they need. We want to make sure students are well-equipped, and that is with the large demographic of students we serve, whether they're English-language learners, students with disabilities, and our average student. We want to make sure that the processes that we invoke as a district really use the core term wraparound. We want to make sure students are wrapped around not only from birth but all the way through '22, that they are supported in everything that we do. Enrollment, obviously, is a big issue. I think enrollment has to do a lot with not only educators' turnover, but I think our schools could do better. When you talk about accountability and commitment to scores, it is our job as a school committee to make sure we hold district leaders accountable. We need those scores up, and we need to market ourselves. The business of running a school, and I hate to refer to it as that, really incorporates the fact that we sell the district. And the district right now is not selling itself well because our scores are not performing at the level they should be. Around staff resources, I want to make sure that we do our best with the budget process, make sure that we hear what teachers say, have the right people at the table, including classroom educators, making sure the resources that they want, they need, are available so students can achieve and that they feel equipped to do so.
All right. Thank you, David. And I do want to each give... I want to give each candidate a 30-second follow-up to this one because, you know, the most responses we got were in this realm. And this kind of gets back to the first part of that question, what's driving people to leave? What do you think is the root cause of these problems? Lorena?
I think... I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I think educator support. I've heard from many educators that they do not feel well-supported and well-equipped to run their classrooms and to teach the lessons that they need to teach. I think some educators feel that we are checking the box in terms of professional development, and so there's no follow-through after having professional development sessions. They do two hours, and then it's a drive-by PD day with no follow-up.
Thank you, Lorena. David?
I think that people are leaving the district because of the scores. I think people feel like they could achieve better growth and progress with their students and their child in a different district or a smaller classroom size. I think the district needs to really look at, including the school committee, I think we need to look at how we're approaching connecting our resources to growth of children, and I think that spontaneously will allow families to feel that they can stay and not have to leave for other resources.
All right. Thank you very much. So, we started with some general trends people were concerned about. There was also a very specific issue that people were concerned about that had to deal with school buses. Big, big, big topic of complaint these days from Framingham residents. And so, Framingham families still face late, missing, or unavailable buses. Do you believe in-house transportation plans will fix the problem for your district? Yes or no? Why or why not? Lorena?
I think that's a maybe question. I think it's too soon to answer yes or no. The district just started operating the transportation fully. I think it's definitely a work in progress. I think that the district definitely is trying to make things work and trying to secure more drivers and to train them, et cetera. However, families' experiences do not really resonate well with the communication from the district about how well things are going. So, I think there's a disconnect between families' experiences and the district saying, "We're doing so much better than we did with the vendor." So, I think communication should be a priority, and I think also the same way that we think about the budget years in advance is how we should plan for transportation. So, where are we now? And really, my main platform is asking questions, bringing inquiry. Where are we now in the process of getting people registered for the next cycle? Because registration is a huge pain point for the district. And so, rather than trying to stick to hard deadlines for parents or caregivers, we need to meet the community where they are, meet caregivers where they are, and ask, "How are we going to help them with registration if this isn't working and has not been working?" So, yeah, I think it's a work in progress, and it requires work on both ends.
All right. Thank you, Lorena. David?
Thank you for the question. I would actually say yes. I think in-district busing will actually be the solution to the problems we be facing. I am proud to serve on the school committee with a school committee that I consider extremely thorough, that has asked questions, that has gotten feedback. I have myself almost nearly two decades working in public schools and independent schools and dealing with transportation vendors. I will absolutely say that our experience with our previous vendor was not successful. So, improvement will actually take place. I am proud of the achievements that we've made thus far. We are up to 66 bus drivers last... Currently, excuse me, at last year, I think we were no higher than 53. So, while progress is being made, and it is early, I do think that this is the right direction for families. Of course, we could do better with communication. Of course, we could do better. Everything needs refinement. Everything needs process. I think that's why you have a school committee. So, you have an advocate to voice those concerns and open ears for families, and they know who they can go to. But I would say absolutely, in-house district busing, I've seen it successful in other districts. Worcester is a prime example. Framingham can... I believe in professional plagiarism. Worcester is close by. We can do something to make it our own. We can follow what they did, understand what their misses were, and not do those misses. But we can also add our own spokes to that Framingham transportation model and make it our own, and I think we're doing that in the right direction, and I'm proud to be a part of the achievements we've made thus far.
All right. Thank you, David. All right. Last main question, and then everybody gets the bonus charter question. So, "With growing concerns about student behavior, bullying, and mental health, how should Framingham balance keeping schools safe with maintaining a supportive environment for all students?" Lorena?
Yeah, I think we need to provide support and better communication again to teachers. I think our educators feel like they are not supported. I remember, I believe it was last year, when many members of the community, including educators, showed up to school committee meeting to express their frustrations with not having support. And it's coming at a very early level, you know, starting from preschool. So, how can we help the teachers be supported and also thinking about resources to help the children who are struggling, who might not need added resources, who might need those added resources in order to thrive and not really single them out and move them out of the classrooms? It really needs to be a holistic approach. And, yeah, I think it's really, really important to bring this issue to the forefront at all levels. I think the high school is also struggling. It's really a common problem, and so, bringing the questions of, "Is this a priority to the school committee? Is this something that is going to be addressed continuously, or does it need to be brought up only when parents and caregivers and the community shows up to school meeting for discussion?" So, I think it's something that needs to continue to come up in conversation and at school committee meetings, for sure.
All right. Thank you very much, Lorena. David?
Thank you again. I want to first start by saying that there is no place for bullying. It is something that I echo amongst my house. We preach kindness, and I think there is no place for that at all. I do think the school committee is the advocate for that. We provide a direct line for families to tap the superintendent and hold him and his team, Student Resource Officer, Mr. Penrod, accountable, and we look at every issue. In the past, we had some hardship with transportation, bullying on buses. We had this very circular process to investigate claims. And this year, we have made sure we have enough cameras on buses, and we're privating enough in-school resources. Again, we can all... on buses, and we're privating enough in-school resources. Again, we can always, always do better, but we want to make sure that families that bring that to our attention, we address with immediate attention, and that us as a school committee really hold the superintendent accountable to make sure that he has a, a real strong relationship with that family to continue to grow and understand what's going on with their child and why either one, they're being bullied, or why their needs aren't being met. I would say there's a, obviously, an in-building effect too, but I think it's our job as school committees to listen to families, make sure they understand that they're being heard, not just listened to, but we understand, and we are empathetic to that. And we provide not only in-school resources, whether it's teachers, but to make sure that they also have a direct connection to the superintendent.
All right. Thank you very much. And I will be giving each candidate a 30 second follow up on this specific bullying question because I have a three-year-old. She knows how to use like her iPad like almost as good as I do at this point. And so not a lot of bullying, I mean, bullying is still happening physically in the schools, but a lot of bullying is also now happening off the schools online. So in 30 seconds, do you have any preferred way to tackle the issues of cyberbullying? Lorena?
Yeah, I think teachers have complained constantly about the use of cell phones in, in classrooms. And so that's a, a big issue, and I think it takes away students' ability to be able to learn and to be able to be present to, to be there for their education. So I think, again, supporting teachers to make sure that they, that they, that we are on their team when it comes to cyberbullying, when it comes to really any issue that, that impacts a student's, student's safety.
Thank you, Lorena. David, I'll give you a couple extra seconds on this one, too.
Thank you very much. I think this, I think this also starts at home. I think so. I think I was fortunate enough to go to the, one of the staple tin, early nights or the parent nights, and the first thing that they had, or one of the first things they had on the screen was for parents to limit screen time. I think that is a critical piece for us as adults. You know, you mentioned your child. You want to make sure that they're not only, that they're limiting screen time, but you're having a watchful eye on what they're doing and how they're engaging. I do think also with the resolutions that we're passing on tech in school, that we need to actually cease and desist. There is a game full of knowledge out there that exists that when technology doesn't exist in the schools, students achieve more. And I think we need to stay firm and hard on those lines.
Thank you, David. All right. Last bonus question, 30 seconds. Would you support the proposed changes to the city's charter? Why or why not? Lorena?
I would, and I, I think I would do it as an addition, as a personal experience. We had a, a preliminary, preliminary election to narrow down the, the race for district to a school committee for three candidates, and it cost the city $25,000. And I think that twenty, the, the, the third person who did not make it to, to, to the ballot, got 24 votes, and so that's $1,000 per vote. So I think it's a lot of money that goes into the special elections, and I think it would be worth doing a revision to it for that reason.
Thank you, Lorena. David?
Yes, I would. I, I think, I think most of the, city councilors brought up good points around that the work that went into this. I appreciate Mr. Cannon's comment around kind of making sure that there is a process more really concise around the cost of a position. I, Stewart of Finance and Prudency, so, but yes, I would support it because I think the legwork has gone into it. And I think that some of the timelines that was mentioned previously allow us to reconvene in five years as opposed to longer. So I would currently, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we can get on to each of your closing statements. Lorena, start us off with the closing.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just want to say that I'm not really doing this for myself. I don't have a, any plans to use this as a stepping stone into public service or public office. This, doing this and running for school committee and eventually getting elected to school committee does not benefit me professionally. I'm doing this because I really care about making our schools better, and I think that our district and our community as a whole deserves a good school system that we can be proud of. And I don't think that we have a lot of pride in, in our school district at the moment. So I am here to, again, ask the tough questions, bring the inquiry to the school committee on your behalf. And, and I'm prepared to ask the tough questions, and I'm really looking forward to actually being a bridge between community and school committee policy, because we really need that. We need more community engagement. We need to, we need to, to have spaces where anybody can come and, and share their concerns, frustrations, happiness. We need, we really need to reach people and meet them where they are. And so I would be honored to represent you and to earn your vote this November 4th.
All right. Thank you very much. David, you can finish us off.
Again, thank you. Serving on the school committee has been a tremendous honor. For nearly two decades, I've dedicated the work, I've dedicated my professional work to education. From Boston to Westboro to here in Framingham, helping schools strengthen, strengthening their financial foundation, support education, and expand opportunities for students. Through it all, one phrase has guided me, student-centric work. It has, it is and has been a very, for a very long time, my philosophy. Every decision I make starts with a simple question. How does this help the students that we are serving? Over the past three years, as your district's new representative and finance committee chair, I've brought the same philosophy to this local work. I've improved transparency, accountability, and communications. I'm focused on resources and what matters most, classrooms, teachers, and specifically our kids. I'm not running on promises. I'm running on proven record of results, conviction that experience matters, especially when our challenges are complex, and our priorities must remain clear. And that student-centric philosophy must remain the core of our integrity. My goal is continue this work and keep Framingham schools moving forward with integrity, inclusion, and of course fiscal responsibility. I ask for your vote, not just for what I've done, but what I continue to do and continue to work with the current school committee and hope for progress. And we will absolutely hold our leadership within the district accountable and responsible for growth.
Thank you, David. And thank you to both candidates for the District 2 race, Lorena Tovar versus David Gordon. Thank you. All right. And we will have our last three-minute break before the final contested race in Framingham, District 6, Brent Lewis versus Eddie Rodriguez. Oh, thank you. All right. If both the candidates have no complaints, we can start 30 seconds early. You guys both good? Two thumbs up? Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. All right. Thank you, everybody that has stuck with us for this entire time. I know it's been a long night. Also, moderating a two and a half hour debate series is also very long. So I just want to say thank you so much for everyone, both up here, the candidates, and in the audience. So we have our last debate of the evening. This is an open race for District 6 between Brent Lewis and Eddie Rodriguez. And last but not least, mandatory coin flop, flip. Don't know why I said flop. All right. Heads. Brent, all right. You know the drill at this point. I really hope so. You can start us off. 90 seconds.
Sure. My name's Brent Lewis, and I'm excited to be one of the candidates for our District 6 school committee seat, the seat that's currently held by Valerie Adubiani. And I just want to take a moment to thank her for her years of service on our school committee, as well as Tiffany Maskell, who is wrapping up her service on our committee. It's important that we thank our leaders. I also want to thank Access Framingham. I have the pleasure of serving on their board, and while there was no special favoritism granted today, I'm just so grateful for the coverage they're providing for these municipal elections. So I'm running for school committee in no small part because my kids are Framingham Public School kids. I have a 10th grader at Framingham High and a 7th grader at Walsh Middle School. Both of them attended Barbary before that and attended Blocks, and were part of the two-way program, which is really one of the gems of our public school systems. And so I plan to bring with me 12 years of experience within our public school system, experiencing not only some of the tremendously amazing things that we have, phenomenal teachers, dedicated parents and PTO boards, but also some of the bumps that my family experienced along the way and stories that other parents have shared with me as well. And so that experience, I think, will help me be an informed candidate and help me to be able to help push our school committee forward to improving our schools, because as tremendous as they are, there is always room for improvement, as my mother-in-law would say.
All right. Thank you, Brent. Eddie?
All right. Well, thanks Brent for being here. Thanks to Access Framingham. Thank you also to Valerie Adubiani for her public service. Hi, everyone. My name is Eddie Rodriguez. I'm honored to be running to serve as your District 6 representative on the Framingham School Committee. I want to thank everyone here, and I want to thank everybody for their feedback that they've given me along the way. I was born and raised in Framingham, and I'm a product of Framingham Schools. I grew up on Kendall Street downtown, attended Blocks, Barbary, Walsh's two-way Spanish-English bilingual program, and graduated from Marion High School where I met my wife. My wife and I settled down here, and we have a four-year-old, two-year-old, two-month-old that will be all entering our school soon. I'm very passionate about education, how it can open doors for all families, but especially passionate about how education can open doors for families with similar backgrounds to mine and help them move forward socio-economically. With my young children about to enter Framingham Public Schools, I've been meeting with many stakeholders in our community about how I can help elevate the strength and academic excellence of our district. And since September of 2024, the consistent feedback I've gotten from many in our community was that my experience, skill set, and mindset was needed on the school committee. So I've committed myself to serving and representing constituents, move some key priorities forward, build on strengths, and improve on some key areas where more growth is needed. I'm committed to bringing my 13 years of experience in finance and operational systems optimization into the role for the elevation of our district. My top three priorities are number one, considerably improving student achievement; number two, thoughtful expansion of pre-K services of our four-year-olds for better educational preparedness; and number three, proactive transparency and communication so all voices are heard and accounted for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eddie. All right. Now we get to start with the very loaded question because the biggest concern amongst Framingham residents, from what we have heard, has to deal with, you know, teacher and student retention. So to start us off on the first question, Framingham has faced teacher turnover, staff shortages, whoa, almost messed that one up, and declining student enrollment in recent years. What is driving people to leave? And what's your plan to make Framingham a district where both students and educators want to stay? Brent, start us off, please.
So I know that this has been a conversation that we've been having at the Framingham level, especially our mayoral election. So one of the first things I did when I became a candidate is I reached out to the administration for data on the number of teachers leaving. The data that they sent was fantastic and in-depth, and I'm sure is available to everyone. But Framingham's retention rate, and this is looking at more than teachers, it's the entire Framingham Public School system, but our retention rate is about 80%. The statewide average is about 85%. So our numbers aren't radically different than what we're seeing statewide, but my real question is why these teachers are leaving. The district does conduct exit interviews as teachers leave. However, only 15% of teachers participated in those exit interviews. And so I know the administration is working on increasing that number, but that is really the key question that I think we need to be asking. As for our enrollment, yes, our enrollment is down about 600 students going into this, this year, which will have significant impact on our Chapter 70 funding that we receive from the state. And I think that is in no small part due to the ICE presence in our community. So we need, as a community and as a school committee, to be communicating to our parents the safety measures that we have put in place. The school committee just passed a resolution affirming our support of our students. And we also need to be reaffirming the plans that this district has in place to not allow ICE agents to operate there if they show up. We have protocol in place.
Thank you, Brent. Eddie?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So since September of 2024, I've really been meeting with as many stakeholders in the community as possible to figure out some of these things and identify some root causes. Spoken to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, teachers, teachers aides, you know, students, coaches, staff, city councilors, school committee members. And look, my mom's had a beauty salon in downtown for 35 years. The environment in a beauty salon can glean some information that's a little bit different than in other places. So a lot of educators come through there. Some of the things that I've heard consistently, some feedback, is that, and, and also, it might be at 80%, but we're losing very tenured and experienced teachers. So we have a lot of younger teachers now. And so these tenured, experienced teachers are leaving because they feel like it's a lot of work in the classroom because they're having to deal with a lot of behavioral challenges that they, they may not have to deal with in other districts. They can get through the curriculums. So there's a few different things that feed into that. You're going to hear me talk about something really important consistently throughout this time. And we've been applying a lot of mops to cleaning up some of the messes that have gone into why our classroom situation has gotten more challenging for educators. But the root cause, the faucet that we got to shut off, it's chronic absenteeism. Okay? We're going to get into that a lot more in terms of research on that. We have to come together and coalesce as a community, even outside the administration and the school committee, to resolve chronic absenteeism. Everything will follow that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. And actually, I do want to give everybody a follow up on this one. And so we'll kind of follow up off of what Eddie said. Brent, do you think chronic absenteeism is the source of this issue?
Chronic absenteeism is a key problem, and I, busing is part of that as well. Kids can't get to school on time if their bus isn't time, isn't on time. And so that is something that I know that the district has been working on. I don't think that chronic absenteeism is necessarily the core issue. Our community, like most Massachusetts communities, is still recovering from a pandemic. Only 16 communities in all of Massachusetts is back to MCAS levels that they were pre-pandemic. And so there are a number of issues. Absenteeism is one.
Thank you, Brent. Eddie, would you like to work off of that?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate his comments. And he's right in that it's not the only thing. But when you look at what happens inside of a classroom in terms of what makes things more challenging for a teacher, it's lack of optimal engagement. Lack of optimal engagement is going to get disrupted massively when there isn't enough attendance. You listen, you watch all, you, you attend all the school committee meetings for the last, I don't have, I don't know how many, you know, handful dozens of school committee meetings. Everything the superintendent's talking about, everything is chronic absenteeism. They cannot engage if they're not attending consistently.
Thank you, Eddie. All right. And I think we already had some hinting and foreshadowing at the ever-present bus question. So let's move on to that one. Framingham families still face late, missing, or unavailable buses. Do you believe the district's in-house transportation plans will fix the problem for your district? Yes or no? Why or why not? Brent?
I think moving the busing and making our bus drivers Framingham Public School employees was absolutely the right thing to do. It is giving us a level of control over how many drivers we have. And as we have brought on more drivers, which we have more than we did at any point last year, we've been able to expand the number of kids that we are able to offer buses to and shorten the routes for some of our students who have really long bus rides. I think there is still tremendous work to be done on this. We need to make sure that all of our kids are getting to school on time. And I know the work of the school committee in this next term, I think there are two key things. I think we need to be more communicative with our families. School, our parents this year learned whether or not they had a bus the Friday before school, which just simply is unacceptable. It doesn't give parents enough time to figure out alternatives if they need to get their kids to give parents enough time to figure out alternatives if they need to get their kids to school or childcare before or after school. And number two, the school district needs to work hard to retain our bus drivers, to make sure that they are valued employees and that they want to stay in our community. Because like any other profession, the longer they are with us, the more they will know our communities, the more they will know our schools and our roads and our traffic patterns. And that will only benefit Framingham Public Schools moving forward.
All right. Thank you. Eddie?
Yeah, in-house busing, I'm so grateful for everybody who was part of that and bringing it in-house. It definitely helps a lot. It gets our destiny under control, like was alluded to before. NRT capped us at 53 drivers on a good day, and now we're up to 68, and we're tracking to be, I think it's 77 is where we're trying to be by the end of the year, within this couple of months. That's going to help tremendously. There's going to be some lumps. I'm committed to getting on the school committee, determined on really getting a standardized process so that, we have 4,400 kids on the buses right now, 5,700 of them, or 5,700 requested a bus. So we need to get everybody bussed. It's going to be a little bit, but I believe that we can smooth this out within a year or so. But that being said, more needs to be done. And as far as how this feeds into, again, chronic absenteeism, we're at 40% for the district. I'm sorry, 30% for the district, FHS is at almost 40%. So Dr. Jeremy Singer has a, he did a great study in Detroit that has a 66% chronic absenteeism rate or did, wrote a book called Rethinking Chronic Absenteeism. And we're going to have to, we've already crossed a threshold where we can't just defer to the administration or the school committee or the staff. We now have to come together. I am, this is a call to action. I'm asking for your help. I want to marshal the forces that we have here in our community. We're going to have to go ahead and use resources like nonprofits and other health resources that we have so that we can identify why the kids, what are the barriers that are not allowing them to get to school and resolve them.
All right. Last but not least, another big one, big concern for parents, I know a big concern for myself, student safety. With growing concerns about student behavior, bullying, and mental health, how should Framingham balance keeping schools safe with maintaining a supportive environment for all students? Brent?
So safety has to be the top concern of all of our schools. As a parent, we are entrusting to our schools and to our educators that which is most precious to us, our children. And so I know that the administration keeps close tabs on the number of incidents that happen in our school. I'm happy to say that those have been down over the years. But we need to continue to resource our schools in ways that support the social-emotional learning that's happening at our schools, to make sure that we have counselors, social workers, that teachers are equipped with the professional development and the support that they need to manage behaviors as they arrive in the school system. I also think that there are ways that we can celebrate these successes in our schools. A lot of what we have talked about today have been hard topics. And yes, there are challenges that our schools face. But I want to take a moment and just appreciate the hard work that our administration is doing, that the school committee is doing, and especially our teachers and professional staff who show up day after day, ready to teach our kids and who do really phenomenal work. I know that Framingham faces challenges, and we will continue to work on those as a school committee. But I want us to also hold the good, because that is also important.
All right. Thank you. Eddie?
Absolutely. He's absolutely right. There's a lot of great things going on in Framingham. And our Framingham schools are such a rich, diverse place, and such a great place for opportunity. When it comes to violence, I'm going to go back to it. A less engaged student is going to have a higher predisposition to be disruptive. Engagement comes down to attendance. If we can come together and we can help, yeah, we got to support educators. We got to support our mental health resources. The city of New Bedford actually took some of the research of Dr. Jeremy Singer, that they had a very high, a little bit higher than our absentee rate after the pandemic. And they've had tremendous results in just a couple of years. What I'd like to see, I get on the school committee, I want to tap, I've got good relationships with every city counselor. I think what we need to do is we need to come together, really vocalize, hey, student attendance is a huge initiative. Let's get excited about it. Let's encourage our students to get on board. Let's identify every unique barrier for each family, and let's tap resources in our community outside the administration, because they won't be able to do it alone if we want to get this done in 24 months, right? So violence will go down with more engagement in our classrooms. More engagement comes from better attendance.
All right. Thank you, Eddie. And I will give the same 30-second follow-up question that I gave the last group of candidates. A lot of bullying now happens outside the classroom over things like social media and smartphones. Do you have any ideal plan to address cyberbullying? Doesn't have to be 100% in-depth. We only have 30 seconds after all. Brent?
Sure. So the state legislature may help us in this regard by putting in a cellphone ban in our schools. We will see if that comes to fruition. And my kids certainly have their thoughts about it. But we know that cellphones and technology are things that our students need to learn to work with and to deal with, both interpersonally, but also professionally, and that's not going to change. And so I would hope that the school can help model healthy ways of using those technologies, both in and out of the classroom.
Thank you. Eddie?
Yeah, absolutely. Look, I mean, these phones, when you look at it, it's designed to get kids out of their, get kids and people out of their frontal cortex, which is where they need to be to learn, and into their limbic system and their amygdala, so they're flight or fight and over-emotional, because that's where you can sell and market to a person best. So we need to limit the usage of the phones. We have to do what we can. If we get help from the legislature, like Brent was saying, that's great. The overarching feedback from teachers is kids are more engaged and it's easier to teach. So yes, I support that 100%, limiting all technology.
All right. Thank you very much. And then mandatory 30-second question. Do you support the proposed changes to the city's governing charter? Yes or no?
So I am going to be perfectly frank that I have not read the revisions proposed for our city charter. I imagine I am not alone in our city as we look to that question. But I would point to the experts that I know, the sources I know, who are deeply vested in this work and who are supporting it. I will certainly be educating myself before I vote, and I would encourage everyone to do the same. But I am anticipating voting yes, in no small part because of the people I know and trust that are supporting this.
Thank you. Eddie?
Yeah, I'm with him. I vote yes. I would vote yes from everything I've looked at. I think it's going to increase transparency. One of the key things I like is that it's going to give a little bit more preparation time. The mayor has to submit the budget with a little bit more time, so it gives more preparation time. There's going to be an opportunity for more public input on decisions as well, which, hey, look, we went through the MBTA, and that was the overarching feedback that everybody wanted. We said, if we want a better Framingham, if we want to run in the right direction, we need more public input. We need more access to public input. So I vote yes, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. There's also a big chance that the only people that have ever read the proposed charter changes have been in this room tonight. So, yeah, we can, you know, we can work with that. All right. 90-second closing statement. Brent, start us off.
Thank you all for being here tonight. And for those of you joining online, I know it has been a night full of Framingham politics. And I hope at this point in the night you are still excited. We have candidates running for elected with, or for elected office with a great deal of passion and vision for our community, and that's no small thing. I want to say thank you again to Access Framingham for their work. And just reiterate that some of the work that's happening in our Framingham Public Schools is truly phenomenal work. I am so grateful for the teachers and administrative staff and for all the work that they are doing with the support of our school committee. I am running because in my 12 years as a Framingham Public School parent, I have seen the highs, I have seen the lows. But it has also given me 12 years of experience, relationships with teachers, relationships with parents, and will help me be a more effective school committee member. And yet I know I will have learning to do, as we all do, as we look into service in this way. I've been attending all of the school committee meetings, mostly in person. I've attended the school building committee meetings, which will be a huge project in these next couple of years, one that I'm excited for. And so I hope in these last 20 minutes or so, you've got a sense of some of my passions and commitments to Framingham Public Schools. And I hope that you mark your calendars for Tuesday, November 4th, and make sure you cast your vote. There are also still opportunities of voting by mail and ballot, as your preference. Check out the city clerk's page or the secretary of state's page. You still have time to register to get one of those.
Thank you. Brent, Eddie finished us off. And afterwards, while I do my closing remarks, can you two gentlemen just please stay up here so I'm not talking into an empty camera for my closing remarks? It was kind of awkward doing the opening. So I appreciate you guys. Eddie, close us off.
All right. Thanks. A lot of what Brent said, he hit it right on the mark. A lot of great things happening in Framingham Public Schools. Very grateful for everybody's contributions. Thank you for the time, and thank you again for having me. The Framingham Public School District is the heart of our community and our families. It is the garden from which we all cultivate the future growth and prosperity of our city. Our students comprise a rich diversity of backgrounds, but we're all unified and that we're all Framinghamers. We all want our children to develop essential life and career skills, open doors to opportunities, and build self-confidence and a growth mindset. As your D6 representative on the school committee, I will collaborate with my fellow school committee members to set clear educational measurable goals, allocate budget resources strategically and effectively support educators, hold administrators accountable, and foster constant communication and strong community partnerships to drive student success for all of our students of all backgrounds. Work ethic solutions that benefit all stakeholders and strong relationships are at the core of how I operate. I'm a team player. I'm a unifier, and I ask that all of us come together, work together to strengthen and drive our school district forward. Now, there's campaigning, and then there's doing the work. I'm fully confident in my ability to apply my experience and skill set into my role and serve the district at the highest level. But I'm managing my campaign myself, funding it myself, and reaching to as many of you to truly listen and learn from you. I don't have a campaign machine behind me. I don't have an army of canvassers. But I deeply care about not only my children, but all of our children in our schools, but, and all the children in Framingham of all backgrounds. I've elevated every team I've had the honor to be a part of, and I need your help to do the same on Framingham School Committee. I respectfully ask for your vote on November 4th. Thank you all for the consideration, your feedback. All voices matter. Thank you.
All right. And thank you very much to Brent. Thank you very much to Eddie. And thank you to all 11 candidates that have come here for this marathon evening. And also, thank you to Access Framingham for streaming this so my girlfriend could send me a sweet text message on the job I'm doing. That was appreciated, too. All right. We have to start or end with the mandatory public service announcement. Do not forget, the last day to register to vote in Framingham is Saturday, October 25th. And all of these elections, mayor, city council, school committee, and the charter, you've heard about the charter tonight, that is November 4th. So on that note, again, thank you very much. Be all you can be. Keep hope alive. Have an amazing evening.